Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the August 6 regular meeting of the Zion City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three is Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bermaner would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bermaner. Leading us in prayer this evening is Pastor Kinfielding from Christian Assembly Church. Is that sign outside your church new? It looks very new.
No, it's refurbished and still working on it.
It looks great. My dog drags me by there every day and the property is perfectly manicured.
Well, we work at it. But hey, I hope you guys are having a great summer and I stand before you with a big smile on my face because now I'm a Papa of six and found out my daughter is pregnant, so they keep coming. We're doing our part.
Right.
But in all seriousness, though, Psalm 118 verse 1 says, "Give thanks to the Lord for he is good; his mercy endures forever." And so, Lord, tonight, we just want to give you thanks. We want to give you praise. Lord, you have been good and your mercy has been extended toward us again and again. And for this, God, we do give you thanks. And, Lord, I do ask that during those times when we are tempted to grumble, I pray, God, that we would remember your goodness and focus on that. And, Lord, we do ask your blessing upon our armed services, our first responders, and those who put themselves in a difficult position voluntarily. Lord, we pray your protection and your blessing upon them. I pray your blessing upon this meeting and each of my friends that are here tonight. And we ask you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Phil. Item number four, do we have any agenda changes by any of the commissioners?
I do have an agenda change.
All right.
I move to remove item 12, closed session.
We have a motion to remove...
Second.
...a closed session, item number 12, by Fisher, and a second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, we have a public hearing. We need a motion to go into the public hearing. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson and second quickly by Holmes. Director Conway, will you take it away?
Yes, thank you very much. This is regarding the appropriation ordinance for the city's...
Excuse me, before you take it away... What's that? We did roll call. Okay. Put your hand up here.
No, we motioned.
All right. Go ahead. Then we did roll call, or am I crazy?
I don't think we did.
Yeah, we did.
We did a motion and a second.
To open the public hearing.
Okay. All right. You're right. All right.
(laughing).
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. All right. Here we are. Take two.
Okay, got it. Thank you again. This is the appropriation ordinance for the city's '24-'25 fiscal year. As you know, in order to have the legal authority to spend any funds, the city must pass an appropriation ordinance every year. The ordinance uses the budget as a guideline, and then we also put contingency line items in there in the event there is an emergency situation. The total appropriation ordinance is typically higher than the amount of funds that will actually be expended unless there's a major emergency situation. The total amount of the 2024-2025 fiscal year appropriation ordinance is $67,98,176, and this ordinance has been on file and available for viewing in the clerk's office.
All right. Beg your pardon. Questions from the public? I was trying to read your lips and my eyes are bad. Any questions from the public about our public or ordinance here or appropriation ordinance? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number six is citizens' comments. Mary Lou Hildbrand.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. During the month of July, your Estes volunteers gave 210 three-quarter hours of service for a value to the city of $7,058. We assisted the police department with equipment for two block parties. We stood watch at the center for the incoming storm and did barricading for flooded streets for driver safety. We assisted with traffic for a fire at Horizon Village, the garage fire on Ezra, and blocked for power lines down on 29th Street. We also provided light towers and rehab for water rescue at Illinois Beach, as well as conducting the One Flows Island test. We provided light towers and primitive safety for the fireworks at Shadow Park. We opened the center for the annual alarm test, held our monthly meeting, and provided traffic safety for the food pantry at New Tech Parking Lot. We did duty times for maintaining our center equipment and vehicles. We would welcome new volunteers who care for our city and want to make a difference. Thank you for your continued support.
All right. Thank you, Mary Lou. And I saw you had some activity this past week with the looked like a really bad accident on 23rd and Elisha, and there was a really quick response by everyone, so...
It was a really good day yesterday at the high school for the community match.
All right. All right. Omar Cruz, given that you're new, you have a three-minute limit on citizens' comments.
All right, thank you. First of all, my name is Omar Cruz. I'm a new business owner here in Zion and in your venue. So we're a banquet hall located at 3363 Sheridan Road here in Zion. For any social events, birthday parties, weddings, intenias, anything that you know you want to celebrate, any meetings that you just want to have, we welcome you to come check us out. And we're here for the community, trying to help everybody out. If there's any fundraisers to be done, give us a call, stop by. Our information's on the door. Again, thank you for having us here and hope to be part of the community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cruz, and welcome.
Welcome.
Item number six is consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of regular meeting held on July 16, 2024 at 7:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Frierson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip.
Bills vouchers 146464 through 146575 drawn on Hunter International Bank, total of $653,587.19.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
All move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number eight, consider passing resolutions as follows. Eight A, temporary road closure, Zion Benton Labor Day Parade per Chief Barton.
Good evening, honourable mayors and commissioners. Thank you. Before you give a resolution for a temporary road closure on Sheridan Road between 23rd Street and 31st Street for Monday, September 2nd, for the hours of noon, 12:00 p.m. and 3:30 p.m. for the annual Labor Day Parade, staff representatives request and specifically request that we approve and recommend closing the road.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell and second by Holmes. All right. I heard that whisper. My ears are still good.
They did.
Questions or comments for Chief Barton? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number eight, be authorizing the city to take all steps necessary to purchase certain real property from North Shore Water Reclamation District per City Attorney Jimmy Fazella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, lady and gentlemen of the board council, as you know, in excess of 15 years ago, the city entered into an agreement with the North Shore Water Reclamation District, and I think at that point in time, it was the North Shore Sanitary District, for the purchase of approximately 411 acres. Since that time, that agreement's been amended five times, but we are now... (knocking) And now to say close to being well-closed on it. That will require the execution of an escrow agreement, the payment of title insurance, the securing of a survey, the execution of a deed, and for the transfer, and the execution of many closing documents. As such, we wanted legislation to advise you and to give the authorization of the mayor, myself, and the administrator to sign and execute and make all necessary financial transfers to close this transaction for once and for all and to allow some development of the property. So it would be our recommendation that you look upon this favorably and approve this resolution.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this resolution, authorizing the city to take all steps necessary to purchase certain real property from North Shore Water Reclamation District for the city of Zion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments from the council?
We are not purchasing the whole 411 acres.
We are not. So we are only purchasing one pin of multiple pins that are out there. We did enter into an agreement with the district that allowed us to reject a portion of the property because it was not buildable and then accept the rest of the property for purchase. That's this pin.
And this has been quite a process, and I'd like to thank our city attorney and our city administrator, who's not here, and some of our elected officials throughout the state of Lake County, that were there to help us work with the North Shore Water Reclamation District and making sure this happened. It's been quite a process, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine, consider passing ordinances as follows. Nine A, making appropriations for the city of Zion for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024 and ending April 30th, 2025, per Director Conway.
Thank you. Again, I recommend approval of the appropriation ordinance for the city's '24-'25 fiscal year in the amount of $67,98,176.
All right. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine B, authorizing and approving changes to positions within the Public Works Department per Director Roberts.
Thanks, sir. In 2016, several Public Works Department positions were eliminated or changed to a part-time basis. One of those positions eliminated was the engineering department staff from two members of one. The increased workload and reporting requirements for federal, state, and local staff deals beneath increased the engineering department. Since the hire of a full-time administrative assistant, we also need to behave part-time assistant is no longer needed. Staff requests and recommends the following changes to the Public Works Department. Addition of one full-time engineering technician and removal of one part-time administrative assistant. Upon approval of this, the salary and benefits will be reflected within the fiscal year '25 general and one.
Is there a... Motion to approve?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Frierson. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine C, and nine C, D, E, and F are all related, but I'm going to go through each one of them with a little explanation. Authorizing the issuance of a Class A1 retail liquor license to Polo Boyo Bocano, Inc., located at 3467 Sheridan Road. This is a regular license liquor license, and no gaming is included, and it's 75 seats. So is there a motion? And the Liquor Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number nine D, authorizing the issuance of a Class A3 retail liquor license to Star 6D 55, Inc., DBA Zogo Sports Grill located at 2325 Sheridan Road. The Liquor License Commission recommends approval. They're new owners. It's the same license. There is gaming there already, so that remains the same, and all of the issues and details have been worked out between the prior owner, the Liquor Commission, and the city. Is there a motion?
All move to approve.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine E, authorizing the issuance of a Class F retail liquor license to Infinity Venue LLC located at 3363 Sheridan Road. Liquor Commission recommends approval. Mr. Cruz was here, a new banquet hall, and there's no gaming on the banquet hall. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Frierson. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh, excuse me. Can you talk a little bit about what alcohol is allowed under these licenses?
I think it's...
Everything.
It's everything.
Everything.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine F, authorizing the issuance of a Class B1 retail liquor license to 2723 Sheridan Road LLC, DBA, the end on Sheridan Road located at 2723 Sheridan Road. Liquor Commission recommends approval. This is a new license that was created for the lounge area at the end of Sheridan. It's for hotel guests only. There's no access from Sheridan Road, and we're making sure that there are verification of all of the guests so that people just can't walk off the street and purchase liquor, which was a big concern for ours with this license. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number 10, departmental commentary. Director Ayanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to thank you, man. Thank you, everybody came out and participated in the city cleanup this weekend. Very successful. Thank all the mayor, commissioners, staff that came out and assisted, so look forward to cleaning up in the future.
Director, how many dumpsters did we use? Because the system this time was really efficient as the dumpsters filled up. In the past, we've left them on the property, but GFL did a tremendous job of coming and taking the dumpsters away as they were filled. How many did we fill for the day?
Total of eight.
Total of eight dumpsters. Went by fast. A lot of tires.
Tires, blood clots involved. Yeah, a lot of tires, for sure.
Yeah, and I've been asked by some of the residents that attended the event the other day, do we anticipate maybe having another one of these smaller event in the fall?
You know, we have discussed that, but never really coordinated, so we're looking into that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Director Ayanson. A great day, and I've heard many of the comments while there was a lot of concern about the trash being removed to the streets from the alleys. One of the things that I heard is there weren't as much, there wasn't as much junk in the alleys.
Yeah, most definitely. Big difference.
So it helped clean our alleys up and, of course, take a lot of the pressure off of the alleys for repairs with the trucks not being back there, being so heavy with garbage. So, great job, great job. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. Our contract patching program is scheduled to start in two weeks, end of August, and that will be throughout the city. That's where we do the large patching for potholes on the streets. Will include a few alleys that are really damaged. Also, we will have the second week of September as the start of the 2024 road program. It's over on Lebanon and 31st Street. Those two stretches will be controlled. That project should last until November.
And if I recall, is that from Lewis Avenue on 31st to Galilee?
Yeah, 31st. We will start the no parking signs next week. Pull up the traffic off of those two streets to get that prep fully.
Okay. Well, I know that's an area that has been in need for a while, living on 31st Street for so many years, coming off Lewis Avenue, so it's good to see we're making so much progress with the roads and, again, with your department. I'd like for you just to, you know, briefly talk to, just make reference to how much money we've used for grant monies to repair roads and alleyways compared to...
Off the top of my head?
Yes. It's a big head, but you can do it.
By having a cheat I handed you.
But it's...
I wanted to say we spent... I was prepared to do that. So since 2015, the city, local city taxes have used $1.1 million associated to $18 million in grants and federal funding and state funding for roads.
That's an incredible total. So thanks for your, for work with that, Ray, and I know with all of the meetings we attend at Lake County and just you looking up all the different grants that are available to us and the help we get from some of our state reps and senators has been absolutely tremendous. So that's a great number, a great number. Thank you. Chief Street?
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. The main thing, I guess, I have to bring up tonight is kind of a public plea for safety at our lakefront, stretching from always State Beach Park in the Beach Park area all the way to the state line at north. We've responded with our neighboring agencies numerous times recently to emergencies at the lakefront. Unfortunately, a couple have lost their lives because of lake related incidents, and I would just ask our residents and visitors to really use extreme caution when they're operating down the beach. We do have a lovely beach, and the state has poured a lot onto the area here from state line and so on, and so we certainly enjoy everybody using it, but we hope they do so safely. And if they don't feel their strong swimmer, just use very extreme caution when they're in the water. We do have emergency divers, both here in Zion and our neighbors, Beach Park with the harbor plus the prairie. We're regularly trained together and respond to these emergencies together. Sometimes it's too late, and we would just urge extreme caution when you're operating that way. We have seen an uptick this year of responses to those type of emergencies. We hope that falls back next year. We have applications opened for full-time positions. We're taking higher exams. They're open until September 13th. Unfortunately, we're not at the point yet where we can have people apply that aren't trained and ready to go. We hope to continue to build our apprenticeship program in the future, and we'll certainly announce details of that when it's ready, we're ready to roll it out. But for now, we hope to give up to spread the words to those firefighters or paramedics that you may know, whether it's family or friends, or family of friends. And so our application process and those details are on our Facebook page, where you can go to check details for application. The only other thing I have to mention, just so it doesn't get missed, Mayor, is congratulations on the accomplishment award you received in Chicago over the weekend, the NABJ Sports Pioneer Award. Sounds like quite an honor, and I just want to make sure we can publicly congratulate you.
Thank you. When you say Pioneer Award, I think of covered wagons and rain. Oh, yeah. I heard you, Ray.
I didn't say it.
Yeah.
I just whispered, just went through my ears.
I heard you. I've got the ears of a dog.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Chief Barton?
Good evening again, mayor and council. I just wanted to congratulate the high school on their collaboration efforts with 126, District 6, and the Beach Park Schools on the Back to School D Bash. It was a big event. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there, but I got reported back to on that event, and it was very successful and a good time for all that were present. I know several of our officers were out there for a good amount of time, and they said it was a good time, a good amount of time. But that reminded me of last year, I spoke with several of our bus drivers who were having issues with vehicles driving around their stop arms. So be on the alert for buses as they are coming through. They will be depositing children back to their neighborhoods after school, so remember not to pass the bus on our extended. I did speak with the bus management to correct some of the routes that they were taking to maybe make it a little bit safer so that some of the intersections weren't lined, but they're going to be working through that through the beginning of this year, and we but they're going to be working through that through the beginning of this year, and we will continue to have contact if that becomes an issue. Secondly, we are also taking applications on Apply to Serve if you are interested in being a Zion police officer. Apply to Serve. But there was something about that Pioneer thing, there's a. But applytoserve.com, that's where you can submit an application.
Still going.
Press the button on the side. On the side, there we go.
All right. Everybody was supposed to do the swim at that.
Twenty-two years. So applications are online. We are, we are seeking applicants. That will be, that test is sometime in September, if I remember correctly. Looking for local people, looking for them. That's what happened.
All right. Director Conway, thank you. Chief Barton.
Good evening. I know, I wasn't here last meeting, but David alluded to the fact to keep an eye out for water bills because they are being printed from our outsourced vendor. They do look a little different. People are not thinking they're from us or something. We had a phone call today with a gentleman who unfortunately was shut off for not paying his bill when I described the envelope. He had two envelopes unopened sitting next to him on his desk. So if you get something that's got a return address of City of Zion, it's probably your water bill. I would suggest opening so you can get it paid and not get shut off.
All right. Thank you. Director Conway.
I'll just mention that since we approved our Labor Day Parade, closing the road, that there are a lot of festivities associated with that, including the Fifty-Sixth Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I can't believe it's been fifty-six years we've been doing this event, connected with our Labor Day activities, and we're going to be doing the same thing at the high school like we have almost every year.
And that's September second?
September, Labor Day, September second, eight A. M. It's the, it kicks off the whole festivities for Labor Day.
And the location is the same, of course, at the beautiful campus of.
South Cafeteria, one-twenty-six.
All right. Commissioner Frierson didn't want to talk about the, okay, all right.
Nothing tonight.
All right. Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Fisher.
Just a reminder for everybody, it's, if you haven't noticed, it's election season. And if you are not registered to vote, please take a moment and go get yourself registered, or if you need to verify your registration, you can do that through, I believe you do that on the county website, through the clerk's, the links in the clerk's office. So just a little reminder, November's coming, so you want to be ready, so.
And the city of Zion will be a voting site.
There, we will be an early voting site, so you can do it right here.
Yeah, and the county handles that. I know that one of the last elections with some of the lines, there were people thought that the city of Zion was hosting this, but it's run by the county, so they come in and really dictate all of the procedures and policies for the early voting site, and they're here examining the property and trying to make it easier for our residents and people in the area to come in and vote, so thank you for that. Item number eleven is announcements, August ninth, at two P. M. is the Coalition for Healthy Communities for our youth golf outing. Commissioner, what year is this for this? It was the Caddy Classic for many years?
It was. I believe it's the twenty-sixth.
So it's, now this is the twenty-sixth year of it, has a different name, so if you haven't registered, please go on to the park district website, and you can register for that. It's at Shepherd's.
Actually, that has been shut down. We're just taking donations right now.
Taking donations. That's why I wanted you to talk about it, see. The website's been shut down, but there's still time for donations.
Yep.
For it. It's a great event, and of course, the money goes to help with programs for our young kids throughout the community, and it's a worthwhile call, it's very well-attended. Starts at two P. M. and then at Shepherd's Crook. After that, we'll be following a little impromptu dinner.
There you go.
If you can make it out, come on out. I know I'll have a couple of foursomes in that, and we hope that the weather stays nice as it did last year. Next announcement, August twentieth, at six P. M., there's a Zion Township Board Meeting, followed by a Zion City Council Meeting at seven P. M. And then, talking about September already, Commissioner McDowell mentioned that to start the day off, fifty-sixth year of the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at Zion Benton Township High School out on Kenosha Road and Twenty-first Street, and the city offices will be closed for the holiday. And on September third, at seven P. M., we'll have our first Zion City Council Meeting of September. That is it for announcements. Item twelve was removed from the, from the agenda due to agenda change, and we go to item number thirteen, which is consideration of approval to negotiate the purchase of property per. Are you going to do this because our administrator neighbor was supposed to be here?
Sure, I can.
So.
I can say something about that if you'd like.
Okay. Commissioner McDowell, talk about the consideration of approval to negotiate the purchase of property for our new fire station.
Yep, that's, that's exactly what it is. So I'm, if David was here, he would have asked the council to approve that he has the ability to negotiate for the purchase of that property. So that's the motion.
Three point four acres?
Three point four acres, yeah.
Yeah, so we have a motion by McDowell and a second by Fisher. Do we have any questions or comments about it? All right. So Madam Clerk? Please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Mayor McKinney.
Aye. Motion carries five to zip, and we wish Administrator Nabel a speedy recovery, but not feeling well. I talked with him today, and he sounds a little bit like I did, having a little bit of chest cold, both of us trying to emulate Barry White, and we're going to be coming out with a new C. D. here soon. Don't know what we're going to call it, but, huh? Yeah, we'll call it the Pioneer Shuffle. And one announcement, I guess, I want to thank Chief Street about mentioning that I was given the Pioneer Award for the National Association of Black Journalists prestigious Sam Lacy Award. Sam Lacy was a brilliant writer that had a career for over ninety years in which he wrote items, and most of his writings had to do with making sure that there was equality in sports hiring. And for him to take on that effort during that time, thirties, forties, fifties, and sixties of generations that he spanned, at being a top writer at the Baltimore newspaper, left quite a legacy, and it opened the doors because the, opened the doors for a lot of the general managers and people on hiring before me, such as, I can think of the first black general manager I ever met was Wayne Embry with the Milwaukee Bucks. I met him when I was in high school. Wayne Embry was very influential during my career, being a great mentor to me once I became a general manager in the N. B. A. But it was a great turnout. They had over five thousand journalists there. That was their best event in Chicago, that they, most attended event that they've ever